Jillian.
Hey Cheryl.
Hi. Are we the only ones?
For. Well, I'm trying to promote Cassandra and Robin to panelists. So Cassandra, when you see the prompt, will you click yes? It keeps saying you're declining it. And Robin, it says you're declining as well. All right, there's Cassandra. There's Dave. And Robin, I'm gonna promote you to panelist again.
Let me see if that's working.
Dave, are you hearing me?
I'm hearing you fine, Judy. How about me?
How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
I have a quick question before the meeting starts. Can I ask a question?
I think so.
Okay. Did you have a meeting with Mike Willie?
Yeah, we'll talk about it. We met on Thursday, the thirteenth.
When was it?
Thursday, the thir- Thursday, the thirteenth at nine ten thirty or eleven AM.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll give you all the details.
Yeah, I just wanted to know when it was.
Yeah, I had initially thought of inviting as many committee members who could come, but Jillian wisely thought, let's not jump on Mike, let's keep it small and let him make his recommendation and then we can invite everyone and have him join us again. And that was, that was a thoughtful suggestion, so. We kept it real small. I know you've been a player in that, so thank you.
Well, I had asked to be at the meeting, that's why I asked.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not.
Yeah.
I didn't register. Okay, well, I overlooked that, I apologize.
Okay. Well, there's Robin.
Seeing. Five, six, two alternates. And our council representative. Well gee, we got that many people. You probably ought to start.
Dave, TJ will not be in attendance. Anthony.
Thanks for the heads up on that.
Welcome.
And we got another, we got a number of citizens who are looking in, good, welcome. Let's see, well then let me grab the agenda, why don't we call this to meeting, to order here right at six o'clock? And. First, we make sure who we have present, we have Judy Karnack, David Conley, Robin Kovats, Paul Arlinghaus, Cheryl Klein. Our regular members and we have both of our alternates, Marion Saruzzi and Cassandra Bresnahan are present. Judith Chandler is also here. And Jillian Rossi, so thanks everyone for being so prompt. We just heard TJ will not be joining us and so I think that's. Everybody? No, Andrea Satella. So we'll see if Andrea is able to pick up here, but we'll go ahead and start because of our timing. The first thing is a review of the agenda. And so I'll ask if the members have any. Changes that they want to make to that. I will tell you that the deputy clerk, Kristen, had suggested that when we have multiple minutes to approve, we can. Put that on a consent calendar and do them all at once unless somebody wants to pull out one of those. But we did not do that on this agenda. So we're gonna go through each one of those minutes when we get there. Any comments on the agenda though? There's Andrea Satella joining us, thank you. So we're, everyone but TJ who's not able to join us is present. Hearing no comments on the agenda, the other is public comment on non-agenda items. We do have a good number of the public joining us, again, welcome. But are there any comments on non-agenda items? We need to be brief because we've got a full agenda. Jillian, are you getting any?
Yeah, Corey from Medicine Wheel has his hand raised, so go ahead, Corey.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, Corey Satella with Medicine Wheel Trail Advocates, just wanted to say a thank you to OSAC for the partnership. On our recent trail work day, we've now had two really successful trail work days, Trail of Days out on the Inman Trail. Really pleased to be collaborating with OSAC and I hope everyone will get a chance to go out and take a look at the improvements we made on the Inman Trail. And we're really pleased with that and looking forward to doing more work with OSAC into the future, so thank you.
Thanks Corey, yeah, we couldn't have done that without, one, your tools, but more importantly, your social media connections and getting Medicine Wheel and other community members. Both workdays had good crew. Numbers, which is part of what made it so successful. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items?
Doesn't look like it, Dave.
Okay, well then we'll move on. Sorry to be pedantic about this, but we do need a motion and any corrections on each one of these minutes. So I'm gonna. Be prepared to raise your hand and give a motion here. I've reviewed each of them this evening, I didn't see anything, but I certainly could have missed something.
I know. I mean, I got to downloaded it, but apparently.
Well, I've, I've received like three.
Okay, don't know who's, who's talking here, so. You need to mute if you would. Okay, well, let's go back to. Any comments on the March twenty-four meeting minutes? If, Robin?
On the page six, the last page, the first bullet point, shouldn't it say? It says proceed, but should it say precede?
You're probably right, last, what, number six, page six?
Yes, page six.
Who's comment? I'm sorry, where, where, I just don't know where you are.
Let's see, it's the first bullet point, it says Lieutenant Willie confirmed that the fire mitigation on Black Canyon Open Space does not need to proceed. Trail construction. That didn't make sense to me. So it did it, should it say precede trail construction that? We could.
Yeah, there's no, that was the, the concept, it did not need to be in advance of the trail construction, it could be accommodated afterwards.
Yeah.
Or you want to change the word? I'm sorry, I'm being kind of clueless, I'm. Trying to find the right sentence here, I'm on the right page, but.
It's the very first bullet point. Says Lieutenant Willie, the beginning.
It's on page eight in the packet, Dave.
That's what helps me is.
Oh, okay.
Eight of the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, just precede, okay, let's change the, change the verb there, does not need to precede. And any other changes on the March twenty-four minutes? Can I have a motion to approve those? I'm sorry, couldn't, couldn't see who that was.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes on March twenty-fourth of twenty-five.
With that one correction.
With the one correction.
Thank you by Robin and a second by.
Andrea.
Give me a hand by Judy, thank you Judy, all in favor of approving the March twenty-four minutes with that one corrections, say aye.
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 Keep, keep, keep talking, okay. I think. I'm gonna say approve unanimously.
That's true.
Okay. All right, that one's approved, on to April twenty-eighth. Any revisions for the meeting minutes for April twenty-eighth? Hearing none, Ms. Kovats, can you make a motion? Robin, can you make a motion on that?
Yeah, sorry, I had to unmute. I, I make a motion to accept the minutes from April twenty-eighth of twenty-five.
Second on that?
I'll second it.
That's from Judy again, thank you Judy. All right, all in favor to approve the April twenty-eighth minutes, no tra- no changes, raise your hands. And yeah, I see everyone, thank you, so that's approved unanimously, on to June twenty-three. Any changes, jump out at anybody. Right, not hearing any, may I have a motion on that?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of June twenty-third.
Thank you, motion by Cheryl Klein and a second by.
I'll second.
Robin, looks like Robin got that one. All in favor, raise your hand again if you can. Seeing everybody, thank you, that motion passes approving the June twenty-three minutes, on to July twenty-eighth, any changes? Before I close that one out, you guys recall the reason we're doing this is that we've had a change in our secretarial process and so that's why we got behind on all these minutes, so. Back to July twenty-eighth, hearing no changes, a motion to approve, who'd like to make that?
I'll make the motion to approve them.
Thank you Judy, and it looks like Robin was queued up for a second, is that okay, Robin?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, and all in favor, raise your hand approving those minutes. Looks like we've got everybody again, thank you for July twenty-eighth, last one, August twenty-five. Meeting minutes, any changes? Not hearing any, can I have one more motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-fifth of twenty-five.
Thank you Robin, and a second.
Come on guys, where are they?
Second by.
I second it.
By Cheryl, thank you, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you again, I know that's real pedantic, but we gotta be kind of formal about this. We have, is that Greg? From the Garden Club on the Pollinator Garden Project, this is an update on the approval from the July twenty-eighth meeting. Setting aside one-two-one Pawnee Open Space. For a pollinator garden and Greg, are you gonna present today or Becky Elder, who's, who's talking?
Whoops.
Yep.
So I just promoted Greg and Becky to panelists. And I see that Becky accepted, so you should be able to turn on your video if you want to, Becky. And then Greg. I'm gonna promote you also. Is there anyone else from the Garden Club that is presenting this evening?
Not that I know of, and I'm just a backup, this is Greg's baby, wherever he is.
All right Greg, bring us up to date.
There he is.
You'll need to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can, Greg.
All right, good evening, how are you today?
We're good, bring us up to date, please.
All right, we, um, let's see, last time I saw you, you approved us, I went down to planning and I got the permit for the fence. Unfortunately, our person that was donating the, the, we wanted a, like a weld, welded wire fence. Very similar to the one that's in front of the pool and that one, and that kind of fell through. So then Jillian said they'll be working on it and probably be able to help us with that in twenty-six. The Garden Club is a group, we all met and got together and we came up with that, you can see it right there, basically a figure-eight design. Our, our intentions are to make this an educational native pollinator plant garden. You can see we have lots of things in there such as benches, sculptures. Someone's already donated gazebo, we're gonna put in an herb spiral compost bin, bug hotel, little ozone plot and plant ID signs. You'll notice as, as you walk in the gate, there's a gathering area, we're, keeping in mind, we're thinking about students from across the street. Will be able to come and use this, we have circular gardens, so the kids will be able to all go around as the, whoever's teaching them about the garden. Notice we also have these things called hugels. And those will. Help us. Becky knows more about those than I do. But it's a system to prevent erosion because that lot does have a tendency in really big rains to flood a little bit. And this is using its, it's kind of like a raised bed where you put in. Pieces of wood and chunks of wood and it creates, you know, a little, a slowdown of the, of the water. Let's see.
Greg, I see you have a scale, but can you remind us what the dimensions of this plot are roughly?
Yes, it's twenty-three by fifty.
Thank you.
Yes. And we did have some problems with the residents parking on there. But Jillian helped us out with that. And so, yeah.
Did one of the members? Greg, hang on, did one of the members have a question, was that you?
I did, I did.
Please, go ahead.
Is this twenty-three feet or twenty-three yards or what?
Twenty-three feet by fifty feet.
Thank you.
Yes. That's the piece that we were given to use.
Greg, given that this is November, what's your, your planting schedule, if that's the right question?
Well, we're, for right now, we're, we're working basically on the layout of it. The city has agreed to come in and scrape it, we have some really, I pulled a, just a ton, well. I pulled ten fifty gallon bags of weeds out of there. But also, it has some really tenacious weeds that are really hard to get out. So the cities decided to come and they will scrape it off for us. And then we're gonna be, for killing out the weeds that are there, we'll be putting cardboard layered down and then we'll be, the city's going to deliver us wood chips and we'll be putting wood chips on top. That means for the springtime is when we will plant. I went to a, they had a native plant seed giveaway in Colorado Springs a couple of weekends ago. And I went there and got lots and lots of seeds that we, that I will start this winter because they need the cold, you know, to go over the winter. And we also got a, at the potluck the other night, we got a, a good tip from someone on the city of Colorado Springs being able to help us with some plants in the spring also. So, yeah.
Very good, very good, any questions for Greg or for Becky, Judy?
Where is the water coming from?
There is a, a water tap right on the property.
And is that? So has that become part of the city's bill to itself?
Yes, just like the other pollinator gardens.
However Judy, I would say within three years, they won't need water.
Right.
These are natives, we're not making really super rich soil or anything for them and they'll be on their own. So I would give it three years, that's, that's standard even for a garden with, you know, non-natives.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just went to a, a class over the weekend on, on natives and that's what they said. Give it three years and it should be self-sustaining. I also visited up in Denver, I visited a native pollinator garden very close to what we want to make and so that was enlightening and we got some good ideas from that.
Alright. Anything else, enough? Any questions for Greg or Becky, any more comments? Becky, anything you're in?
Oh man, there's always more to say, but let me just say this is a really good educational garden. And Pike's Peak Permaculture is an educational nonprofit, so I am sure that we'll have people who will be interested in participating in this. We also feel like we can get more helps for the city, we all know the city is like, kind of hit a speed bump on funds. But the good thing about permaculture and going slow and building on our successes like this is that we can, we can do it pretty affordably and I wanted to tell Jillian about fencing, to me, my favorite fencing for a place like that would be wood posts with the concrete reinforcement wire. Because you let the plants become the fence. And it's not very expensive, so I don't know if the city can afford that, but we can also ask for donations. There's lots of places in the region that would help us with this, so I think it's great, I think it's a great first project on, on this scale, and I would also say that the city needs pollinator gardens every year to maintain their status, so this could be, participate in that for next year as a shining example, and Greg didn't mention the ozone garden. Ozone also came out at the event last night when poor Richard, when Richard Scorman was speaking. And we have an ozone garden, which you put in plants that actually react to ozone when the levels get dangerous or get, you know, high, so that we can deal with that and it's, it's a demonstration garden for that as well. So. I think it'll be a fabulous project, actually.
And at the Clement Action Working Group Potluck that we had the other night, I manned the, a booth for, for the Garden Club and I had these designs out and we had overwhelmingly, a lot of people, people were signing up saying, well, you know, how do I, how can I get so I can help, you know, plan to and work on this next year? So I was very pleased over that.
All right. Anybody else, questions? Thank you guys for coming back and giving us the update. We might reach out to you in the spring, what, late spring, should it be, like May, what, just for another quick one, would that be May or June?
Yeah, June, June might be too late, you know, sometimes it gets super hot in June, May, middle of May is like prime. All hunting time.
I agree.
Just one, just one thing, I have my hand up, are you able, able to see that?
Oh, I do now.
Oh, okay, when you see my name, yeah, just to mention Colorado State University is offering three separate courses on native plants and I intend to take at least the one on design in case any member is interested.
Okay, thanks Marion.
Yes.
All right, Greg, Becky, we'll let you go, thanks again for joining us.
Oh sure, happy to come back if you need us, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So much.
Thanks Greg, good job.
Okay.
All right, moving on the agenda, I don't think we have any reports from Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we didn't have any minutes, Jillian, anything on that?
Judy is waving her hand, what's up Judy?
Sorry, I can't, can't do everything, go ahead Judy, what do you got?
We, we, I don't think we've done this before that I remember, but we probably have. Wouldn't it be a good idea to just tag what we just said onto twenty-twenty-six April? So we remember to get ahold of Becky. Or Greg and say, you know, do you want to meet, do you want to come in April, do you want to come in May, because.
Sure, sure. That's why I asked, and so yeah, I, I made a note of that, is there some more formal way you're thinking to keep track of that?
I, I was just saying, if, if, yeah, if it just gets on a, somebody's calendar.
It does, okay, yeah, it is, all right, thank you. Well, back to the Parks and Recreation, Jillian, anything? Well, back to the Parks and Recreation. Jillian, anything, um, from Par that you need to pass on? I don't know if we have anything.
Yeah, so tomorrow is the Creek Walk Trail Phase Four Ribbon Cutting. It starts at ten AM, so hopefully we'll have some OSAC members there. I know Marion said she was able to make it, but OSAC did contribute significantly to the project and I think it'd be awesome to have, uh, representation there from OSAC. So that project is wrapping up. I also, and this is another agenda thing, El Paso County has a couple of folks from their trail department who would love to introduce themselves and speak to OSAC at a February or March meeting. So Dave, whatever, whi- whichever month makes the most sense agenda-wise, um, we have two folks from El Paso County who'd love to talk trails with OSAC, uh, on one of those dates. So just let me know.
Sooner than later. Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for that notice.
Yeah, no problem. And, yeah, they were excited to be invited, so that'll be good. And then thanks everyone who submitted feedback for the Bill Bowers Open Space Outreach questionnaire. I am working with Kim Lee Horn to have that survey ready to go after Thanksgiving. We're updating a couple of the maps to make them more clear, adjusting some of the questions, eliminating redundancy, et cetera. So really appreciate everyone who took the time to review the draft questionnaire. And then for Black Canyon, we are getting quotes right now for some survey and engineering design work that we need for the crosswalk, the pathway and the bridge that will be at the trailhead. So that's where we are with Black Canyon right now.
Very good.
Yep.
Any questions from Jillian on the three, on those three? Thanks for the update. That's what we gotta do every meeting and just make sure things keep moving. Any questions?
No problems.
Not seeing any. Thanks, Jillian. Um, under old business item F, uh, we have an update on our meeting with Lieutenant Mike Willey. Um, recall that City Councils, uh, directed OSAC and the Fire Department to identify some parcels for fire mitigation that have a high risk, uh, as an alternate to Black Canyon. And we met Jillian and I and Cassandra Brezner had met on Thursday. Um, Mike has a, um, a meeting with Colorado Springs Utilities. At the base of Red Mountain, if you look at the map, Colorado Springs Utilities owns two parcels. I don't know the history of that, but two parcels. They also have their, uh, high voltage transmission line that runs, uh, east to west across Manitou there. They, they, utilities are interested in, uh, doing some fire mitigation, either supporting a joint project with, uh, your boots on the ground from their wildfire team or funding it and letting Manitou run it. Mike Willey is meeting with CSU representatives either this week or next week. Was his plan. And then he plans to report back to OSAC and prepare a, uh, fire prescription for the parcel that he and CSU are nominating. And I think the plan at that point, although we, again, bring it back to all of you, is then to take that to council, um, and respond to them. Jillian, is that, sound like an accurate summary? Was there more that, more detail that I left out?
That was pretty accurate. Uh, Mike's gonna be meeting with Colorado, City of Colorado Springs Fire, not CSU. I think that was the only correction.
Thank you. Well, that is a big direction. That is a big change because, uh, they're different. One's an enterprise and one's a city. But yes, that's, strikes me as correct too. It's Colorado Springs Fire Department. Uh, and Mike, Mike had identified two, uh, of their representatives who've been very helpful to him. Either planning Black Canyon or other fire mitigation in Manitou. So he's relying on them, uh, and he'll report back to us. That's the, that's the current plan.
That, that's on Black Canyon, right?
That's, when you say that, what, Mike Willey is, Mike Willey is proposing to follow the City Council's instructions to identify a parcel at the base of Red Mountain.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
So that's moving along because we'd like to move forward on that. I think council was pretty clear. They want us to move forward on open space fire mitigation. So that, um, we'll keep you posted on that. The next step should be Mike reporting to us and making a presentation to OSAC. And we'll, we'll make sure we push him to keep, keep that hot on his schedule. Any questions about that? Okay. Um, trail maintenance, um, already heard a bit from Corey. Thank you, Corey, for popping in on that. Paul, do you have, um, update on that workday, November nine? I think you had some pictures. Yeah.
There you go. Okay. Now I'm both unmuted and presenting. Alright, so, so Corey spoke earlier and thanked us for this, so, so I'll return that. Thanks, Corey, for helping us support that. Um, I'll just go through some photos real quick. I think we, we limited the sign up to twelve. We ended up with like fifteen or sixteen, so we, we somehow got a few extra volunteers, so great turnout, uh, for the day. Um, come on. Okay, uh, so this is the main issue that drove the workday, uh, last spring with the heavy rains. Uh, this section of the Intiman Trail coming off Pawnee towards the Red Mountain, uh, water was running the whole length of this trail and then where it came down into the, uh, creek, we were having erosion here on the side of the trail. There's a picture of it from the side. And we really want to address that before we get into this spring's, uh, snow melt and rain. Uh, there's volunteers getting started, uh, moving dirt and preparing for the rocks, uh, thanks to Parks Department. Um, Brennan helped me get rocks located from, uh, the Manitou. They have a pile of leftover rocks and dirt. Um, we sorted through it, got some nice rocks. So those were all staged right there, ready for us to work. Um, there we are setting the, the anchor rock at the bottom, uh, starting to work up from the bottom. And there's the final product. Uh, there's a, a little hard to see there, but there's, uh, dirt work to make sure that water coming down, uh, water be coming from the right and any water would be pushed onto the rocks and come down this hillside and the rock armored section rather on areas that are unarmored. Um, we additionally went uphill and did some drains. So this will also now limit the amount of water that can ever make it to that spot. So there's some volunteers in the process of working on a drain. Um, there's the finished product. You can see we removed dirt from the downhill side, which, uh, on these fire, uh, wider trails tends to become like a berm, so it traps water onto the trail. Uh, so we removed that dirt, pulled it onto the trail, which raises this, creates a grade reversal. Uh, as water comes down, it'll get pushed off and flow off the trail rather than coming down here to where our, our, uh, erosion issue was. So, got done with really the, the main works. We kept working uphill. Um, this is a bridge and this section here is actually all sediment, like water should have been flowing under this bridge. Uh, with that filled in, water be flowing onto the bridge, which isn't good. Uh, I don't have an after picture, but this was all removed and then some of that dirt was used to, um, you know, ramp this up so we don't have such a hard step there under the, the bridge. And there's our leader, Dave Connolly, uh, out there, uh, overlooking Manitou Springs, working on a drain. So.
I was, uh, I, I spent time underneath the bridge. Thank you very much. Pulling, pulling stuff out that the guys above were, were loosening, but a whole lot of work done and, uh, looks quite good.
Yep.
Thanks for, for, uh, and Paul was the one who designed or, uh, you know, identified the specific spots. So we, we had a good crew and very successful and great weather to do it. Slightly cool.
And, uh, hang on a second. I might have a late entry. I just got a, uh, there, there's a picture of the after, so there's the water being able to come under and it ramped up. Alright.
Yep, indeed. Alright, thank you. Um, let's see, the other one, if I can share a screen, let's see if I can do this. Um,
Yep, go ahead.
Send the request. Get that going. Um, I had suggested that after the Iron Mountain Trail Repair where we spent, uh, eighteen thousand dollars, that we ought to post some signs. Uh, can you guys see this here?
We can't see it, Dave. Could you try to share again?
Try to share again. Okay. I can. There we go. Let's try it now. There we go. Should be there.
Yep, there's.
Okay. Um, you know, very much like CDOT does, um, you know, this bridge was built with your tax dollars. Um, so I just suggested a short sign like this, um, and Jillian prepared them and I just biked up there on Friday morning and put three of these up there. Um, this one, I have to apologize to Paul because he's the one who did the work and I don't think he got paid, but the idea was to, uh, remind people that this trail repair, it starts here and turns the corner, um, was done with the open space tax funds, uh, so that people don't forget, they are paying for this. This is, uh, I put up three of these, one at each end and one in the middle. This is the one in the middle, starting to go down, um, Iron Mountain toward the east and then down at the bottom where the, um, this is now going back westbound. You're looking at Crystal Hills, uh, Crystal Park up here. So these are just on a stake and I'll go up and, uh, if they've blown away, I'll go find them in about a week or two and, and pull them. But it just seemed like a real cheap way to remind people this is, you paid for this. This is the benefit. Um, when I was doing this, I ran into three different people, um, in different times. I mean, it's only took like twenty minutes to do. But they all were very appreciative of the, um, of the trail repair. So anyway, that's just a little follow-up on that. Um, let's see, any comments on that sign or any questions for Paul? We'll close out that one. Nothing?
That's a good idea.
Well, thanks. Thanks, Judy. Yeah, it seemed easy to do and boy, Jillian had it done and I think the next day.
What, what are they made out of?
Oh, they're just, uh, Jillian, what did you say? They're just plastic laminated piece of paper?
I just printed out the signs on regular paper and laminated them. And thanks, Dave, for putting those up. They look great.
Here's one right here. I have two extra. You know, there's not much to them.
They're not extra. They're for the next trail.
They are. They are. And I, I will certainly look. I'll look for an opportunity to put them out there. Um, alright, well, let's close that out. Let's go to the West End Parcels. Um, let me do a little introduction and then hand this over to Cheryl. Um, the reason this is on the agenda.
I was gonna do it the other way around, but go ahead.
No.
Go ahead.
Mine's, mine's gonna be real brief. Then we'll turn to you and then come back to me if you want.
Come, come back if we need to.
The reason this is on the agenda is, is not because there's any breaking news, um, to, to, to share. Uh, but it's to make sure that can, the discussion continues, that we don't drop the idea of focusing on the West End Parcels. And so Cheryl, um, had, wanted to make sure that we continued this. Uh, we started to discuss it last meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. And so we thought, well, let's do this a bit more formally. So, uh, it is on the agenda just to, again, make sure this discussion stays alive. Cheryl, you got some more points and then I can pick up again.
Well, just to kind of give a little more structure to the discussion and clarify, because maybe there is some confusion about it. Um, I wanted to ask you to kind of review in a minute our, our process whenever we are interested in any, either acquisitions or any kind of agreements with owners of property in Manitou Springs, um, in a minute. And then, um, perhaps at some point you could share the discussions that you've had with, uh, the owners uh, in the past and when those were. And then from the community members that are here and interested in sharing, we'd like to know, um, kind of what the history is of the agreements that are permissions that the owners gave and help us identify, uh, for those on the committee and in anyone else who's not familiar with where exactly these roads and or trails are that, um, people are interested in. And then, um, and what, yeah, and if there was an agreement from the owners, kind of help us understand what that was. Um, and then your ideas also, uh, well, and kind of the, the end purpose is to see if there's any path forward for any of your interests. And also your ideas on how to manifest those interests. So that's where I wanted to start though with you, Dave, if you'll kind of explain our process, O- OSAC's process.
Yeah, the, um, Tim Beeson, uh, was the prior chair and in, uh, February and March of this year, so what, eight months ago or so, uh, he initiated a conversation with Dave Walton, who's Harold Walton's son. Uh, this is before Harold passed away in June, so it was back in February. And we, Tim Beeson and I met with, um, Dave Walton. And, um, the purpose of the meeting, which we made real clear was to, um, because Tim had spoken with him previously in the prior year, twenty twenty-four. Was to make sure that, uh, the Walton family knew that OSAC, uh, and the city would be interested in a discussion if they were willing to open that door to, um, and a discussion of either a, an acquisition of, of some portion of their property, uh, and also, uh, maintaining trail access. And Dave Walton was very cordial, uh, he's very polite, but he also made it quite clear, um, that he was weary. He's weary of dealing with the city of Manitou, that, uh, his family had made at least three proposals, uh, development proposals.
Excuse me, that was Walton or was, that was Walton, not Jenkins?
That was Walton.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That in the past ten, fifteen years, the Walton family had made at least three development proposals that had been, the door had been shut very loudly and, uh, forcibly. And so his family was weary is the word he used. Um, but again, he was very cordial, um, and he did close the meeting by saying that, yes, the door was still open, uh, for discussion. And that if we had something to propose, he would certainly pass it on to the family. Uh, the other information he provided is his assessment that, um, when his father passes away, which happened about five months later, things would get much more complicated because there would be more family members involved. That title, uh, to one of the parcels was held in Harold's name, Harold, uh, and that that would change on his death and that it would become more complicated. And that is the situation that we're in now. Um, on Jenkins, um, I met with Chris Jenkins, uh, again, this was in February, eight months ago, um, to introduce myself and to see if there was any opening to continue the discussion that, uh, Mayor John Graham had started in the prior summer, um, with Tim Beeson, again, the prior chair. And, um, Chris made it clear that the Jenkins family would like to make, like to contribute toward the improvement of transportation in the Ruxton Corridor. Um, that there were, they, the Jenkins family were willing to consider various, um, alternatives, various mechanisms, uh, purchases, contributions, conservation easements. Uh, he covered the, the litany of those. Um, if the commen- if the community could coalesce around something. And so that's where that conversation, uh, was left. Um, I then met with, uh, Jeff Berry, who I think is, uh, observing or listening in today, and Ken Jurey with Tim Beeson. Uh, this was in March. And, um, the message was from Jeff and Ken, um, to the extent they could represent their neighbors, uh, which they were careful about qualifying, but, uh, to the extent they could. What they expressed is that, yes, the neighborhood would love to preserve the Jenkins property in some fashion. But their criterion, their absolute fundamental, unmovable criterion was any plan cannot bring one additional car into the Ruxton Corridor. into the Ruxton Corridor. That if any proposal includes the potential for any additional intensity of traffic, that is dead on arrival. So that's been the extent of my participation until today, until this agenda item was posted. And it has had the result that Cheryl wanted, and that is I've been, I've had three phone calls this morning. Renewing interest in discussing any alternatives for the West End parcels. But particularly with a focus on preserving trail access from that neighborhood west and north around the water plant to access the Ute Indian Trail. That's what's been impressed to me today. And that's, that would be my update.
When you say three calls, are these from people in the neighborhoods?
Yes, yeah. I've spoken to three members of the West End community today. And because of this agenda item, because it's been posted. They're clearly actively involved and still very much engaged in wanting something to happen. And what Cheryl wanted to have happen at this meeting is to do a quick summary of where we are. I will tell you, I'm not aware of any pending proposals or plans or transactions. And so what we thought we would do is and Cheryl won't do it just yet, but we'll open the meeting for some public comment. And ask for some of the citizens who are listening in to give us your suggestions. Cheryl prompted that a few minutes ago. Particularly asking about trail access. But right now, nothing is moving. And it would be great for the community if we could get something to move ahead. But it takes some organized effort and some coordinated effort. It can't just be disparate activity. Cheryl, anything? What's, what else on your list?
Well, and, and for the community members who may or may not understand how O-SAC's process works in terms of acquisitions or agreements that wouldn't involve money. But how, how do we go about make, you know? Can you explain the process that it's not us, we don't make the final decision, that we make recommendations? And maybe I'll explain what I know, but you can add to it. We make rec-, you know, after we've had discussions, after we've had hikes, we've, you know, whatever we do, surveys, whatever we do, and this would be a, a part of a decision. But if, if out of any process we decide to recommend to the city, then we make recommendations to the city and they vote and decide on whether to spend that money or whatever needs to happen. Can you add to that if there's anything else that?
Yeah, I can, because what I would add is at the start, I thought you described it well. And I'll ask Judith to chime in here if she has something to add or that she'd like to. But it always starts with a conversation. Any, any transaction or proposal, it starts with people sitting down over a cup of coffee or a glass of wine or something and and talking and seeing if you can find some common ground or some, make it a win-win. What what I would propose to do is to reach out again to Dave Walton, now that he is the executor of Harold's estate. And remind him that there is continued interest. Depending on what the family's needs are and what their desires are, there may be an opportunity here. And that's it, that's the start and I'm happy to do that. Judith, anything you'd want to add to the process or I'm happy to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm happy to pick your brain.
I, I think you guys did a great job. As, as we all know, these types of recommendations often sometimes they come to us as just suggestions and sometimes they come to us as full-blown plans and proposals. And things that might have been voted down in the past tend to come back when there's a new council in place. Because there's new people and, and so I, that, that's, I often see that. I also just wanted to say from my standpoint and most of council, having robust community engagement is critical to any of these decision-making decisions on the city's end. So, so and I want to be, continue to be an advocate for that. That we don't make decisions until we have community input and support.
Well, that's the Manitou Way, or at least that's my experience. Judy, Judy?
I, I just want to add, because for myself, as much as I've heard about this over the years, I have never actually had a chance to go up to that property. And I feel, I always feel like the people who've been there are talking and I'm going, I don't even know. I know there's a fence, that's all, really, that's all I know. I know there's a fence. But I think, I think I think they, from what I have heard and experienced is both of those groups, Waltons and Jenkins. And you said it yourself, Dave, that they're so, they say they're so burned up about Manitou anyway. That maybe this is a chance for a chance for us to get together. Maybe a walk along the fence line, whatever it is, but also get an idea of what we're talking about. And also, the idea is also that, you know, we have a fresh council, council conglomerate. We have a lot of fresh ideas and fresh people on O-SAC. And maybe we can restart on that basis. And see where they're at, because clearly if they're quiet, it tells you that, that, to me, it tells you they're waiting for us to do something. They're not going to volunteer because they've been burned.
Yeah, they are asking us to make a proposal. They both, in my meetings with Chris Jenkins and Dave Walton, they both said it exactly that way. Make us a proposal, we'll look at it.
But I, I'm saying too, I would like to, I would like to see if we could get a walk up there or something and even meet with them and let them tell us about the property. We can become, oh yeah, familiar with it and, and have more than just what I hear from everybody I don't see.
Well, I have the same need. I've been on the Walton property only once, a guest of Harold, three, four years ago with a hiking group. But I too have a question of where are the trails that the local community is asking about? And I've not driven the Water Department Road, neither have you, so I'll make that happen. I'll schedule something with you and perhaps other members. Paul, you have some knowledge up there about the, the local trails. I don't know if any other members of the committee have the familiarity about that property. Andrea, have you been up there? Do you or, or Robin? Either of you know the Walton property? Or can you say you're familiar with it? I won't say know it, but familiar with it?
Yeah, I've walked around there a bunch.
Good, okay, well, it helps. I mean, at least you've got some familiarity.
I've walked it also with some of the attendees here tonight.
That's right.
I'm not, I, I don't go by myself because I'm not happy to be around bears and lions by myself.
I agree.
So, so I, I can't give good descriptions as some of the people who are here tonight. So when we do open it up for more discussion, that would be one thing I'd like to invite is just a verbal description of more of the two properties and then potential you know, trails, continuing whatever trails you've been using or if you have other ideas. As well as I, I think a site visit, like we've already mentioned, would be great.
Okay. Robin, how about you?
I'm familiar with the I'm familiar with the, the area of the two properties. I, I do not know of any trails that are possibly going through the properties. I, I don't know anything about that.
Okay. And then I, I called out on Paul and then I ignored him, so. Paul, how about you? You have some familiarity, I think.
Yeah, I've been trying to be careful because I, I know some of that land is private owned and I don't personally have permission to be on it, so. I have ridden up to the water treatment plant. Not a hundred percent sure on that road. And then I've just poked around on the internet on some different mapping programs. I think I have an understanding of where the trails are that are in question. But yeah, again, it'd be good to see that. I haven't seen, I don't believe I've seen the trails in question, like actually hiked them.
Well, what I thought we would do at this point, let me ask if Marion or Cassandra have anything to add though, before we take another step here. Marion, anything to add or question?
I, I've been to the water treatment plant area. I think it's an excellent idea and I'd be happy to participate in a site review because it's very hard to you know, and very hard to figure out what's going on without knowing exactly what we're talking about. So I'd like to see it in person, but
Yeah, Paul had Paul had some concern that it may be very difficult to have this discussion without detailed maps or aerial photos in front of us. Uh, but we, we can make a start here in a bit. Marion, anything else for you before I, I'm going to hit Cassandra and then go back to Andrea?
Nothing else, just, just I agree with the site visit.
Yeah, thank you. Cassandra?
I believe I know these trails. I, I live real close, so I've been hiking there on what appear to be well-used trails. So I'd be happy to show you what I know.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we need a site visit. Andrew? What are you thinking?
Um, a site visit I think is great, but it is someone's private property, you know? I don't think you would like it if someone's like, let's go have a site visit on your private property.
No, I'll, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that we appropriately ask and obtain permission if it's possible. Judy?
I, I really, maybe I didn't, maybe I wasn't clear. I thought I thought, I thought it shouldn't be a site visit in this, it, just us. I was thinking I don't know how this would work out, but I was thinking that maybe if we, if we, if we were going to do Dave Walton's property, that property, let's just take that. Invite him to show us the property. Let him know we are really interested, but we want his input. Because, and I mean, I can't think of the better way to tell someone we're interested to say, we'd really like you to show us this. We really are lost every time we're up there. We know we shouldn't, you know, people shouldn't be up there. We don't want to offend anybody. Could you help us by showing us? Now we're with the man, so to speak.
Well, it's, it's a somewhat delicate, but a polite conversation and I can certainly initiate that. But I, yeah, appreciate your suggestion, but at a minimum, we can have the city drive us up the, the water road.
Right.
For those of us who haven't done that.
But I, I'd like to really, you know, I'm trying to think of ways to get to show them that we're really interested, we're sincere, but we're green, so to speak. We're, you know, we don't really know what we're talking about. And I think that's an honest approach.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing that pretty strongly from the committee and I can take steps to, as I say, make that happen or make the inquiry of both Dave Walton, but certainly Jillian and I can, can schedule so that it works for the committee. We'll have to post it and so forth. I think what Cheryl really wanted us to do tonight is to open this up. We do that somewhat formally and ask for some of those citizens who are here to, to comment. I'm gonna put Jeff Berry on the spot. I have not given him any heads up. But if Jeff could be the first one or Amy, who I know has been involved for their neighborhood. That might be a more efficient way to, to get some input. What we do, as I've reserved the prior, excuse me, as I have reviewed prior minutes, the way this is done is that we as chair, I state that we're opening this portion of the meeting for public comment. And ask that you keep your comments very focused and concise. You can tell what we're looking for. And so let me ask if Jeff or Amy could ask to unmute and I see Jeff has, so Jillian and Jeff, can you guys take care of that?
Hi, everybody. It's, it's Jeff Berry. I reside, thank you, Dave.
Yes.
I reside at 386 Pilot Knob, which borders the Jenkins property. I'd like to say that I'm pretty familiar with the area around my house here. I'd be happy to show you all some of the trails that are impeded, I guess, by the Jenkins property. Happy to do that. I'm less familiar with, with the Walton property. So keep that in mind. Two, two things, I think, as Dave mentioned, the the, the prospect of any of us here in the Ruxton Corridor incorporating more traffic into the Ruxton Corridor with yet another road or more business activity around the cog or the incline is, is really unsustainable. We're at a breaking point, I think, up here in trying to navigate to our homes. And the quality of life appears is really deteriorated because of that over the past decade that I've been here. Close to fifteen years now. So.
Wow. What happened?
Did we lose you, Jeff?
Am I, can you hear me okay?
Now you're back.
Okay. Uh, I, I would just say that, that, that more traffic into the Ruxton Corridor is you'll find a lot of opposition to that with another road. It's, it's, it's a pretty difficult situation to navigate in and out of the Ruxton Corridor as it is. I think everybody's familiar with the phrase that if you build it, they will come. The Field of Dreams catch line. Uh, another road in here will certainly increase traffic into this corridor and I don't think, I don't think we can support that. One other thing I'd like to say before turning over, turning it over, Dave, is that you said that there's been no movement in these properties, that everything is sort of at a stalemate. And you know what we're seeing here in the Ruxton Corridor on Pilot Knob? Is that there is a lot of survey activity happening up along the Midland, the Midland Trail, the old Midland Railway bed. And it's concerning to us, I think, as residents to think that something might just be in process that we're not familiar with. A lot of surveyors up there taking, you know, their measurements, elevations, grades, that sort of thing. So I just raised that, that concern to the, to the, the committee that, that maybe it might be something to inquire with the Jenkins families if they're if they're moving ahead with some plans that we're not familiar with. Transparency, I think, is really important in all of this, so. So that's all I really have. If, if anybody would like to meet and, and look at the trail system here right around my house, I'd, I'd love to show you guys what we were why we moved here, why I moved here was, you know, access to the Ute Trail and that's pretty much been cut off now with a chain link fence. Uh, the, the Jenkins property kind of comes to a bottleneck right behind my house. And there is twenty feet between pri-, between private property, our private property and the Ute Trail. So there's a, there's a trailhead that's, that's been that's been deterred from use. So that's a possibility of just getting access to that so that people don't have to travel to, travel up to the incline and increase the traffic up there. If they could access it through the Midland rail bed, that'd be great. So that, that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for, for jumping in there. Just looking, I see Amy's unmuted. Amy, can you identify yourself and give us a few comments?
Yes, my name is Amy Karas. I live on Pilot Knob. So I've known the Walton family in the past and hiked those, the trail up there a lot and things like that. So the, it's of course private property, as is Jenkins property. Kind of the, the loose agreement that the Walton family had, especially Harold, was that if you knew the Walton family, you could walk on the property. And if you didn't know them, you weren't supposed to. I'm not sure what the family is expecting now that Harold has passed away. There is a sign on one of the trails that says no access granted without permission and they have a contact information on there and various companies listed. I, I, you know, obviously since Harold passed away in June, I'm sure that the family is, um, planning to sell at some point and potentially sell it to somebody who would put in a bunch of homes, you know, and develop it. Um, so I think it would be tremendously valuable to see if we could have a seat at the table to reopen that discussion, to let them know that we are interested. Obviously, um, that, I don't know what that, that land is worth and there's a lot of land up there. So it could be, um, very much outside of the budget of what OSAC could afford, but I don't know if there are certain tax breaks that we could offer the family or tax exemptions or some kind of trade, you know, maintaining the road that gives them access up to their mountain lodge and to the, the rental house that they have up there in exchange for some of the land or some kind of thinking outside the box idea.
The person, someone from Jeff, uh, Jeff Berry, Berry just spoke.
Oh.
She's just.
Hang on, Brad. Hang on for a second. Okay, Amy, go ahead and, and, uh,
Yeah.
Continue there.
Okay. So if there are some kind of incentives that we could give the Walton family for considering us, I, I don't know of the other attempts that the Walton family has made at developing. I do know the most recent attempt they have made at developing was to open a campsite near the Adventures Out West zip line. And that came out with a lot of strong opposition from the community. And so I can, I can understand why the Walton family feels weary of Manitou and getting blocked by that. But I still, I still firmly believe there were good reasons to block that campsite idea with, you know, fire hazard and things like that. And, um, increased traffic. So, um, but I certainly would hope that as the Walton family has approached that, um, our utmost gratitude for, for the residents and neighbors, having been able to use that land for the past thirty-plus years is expressed um, in our, uh, in our approach with them. Um, for the Jenkins property that, you know, we moved here in the nineties and that, that was open. And, and at various times, the, the gate has been locked and unlocked and depending on how we've blocked or unblocked Jenkins from developing, he gets kind of angry and then locks it up. So it's, it's been locked for, gosh, a long time now, maybe ten years. Um, and like Jeff had spoken of blocking access. Um, on the Walton property, I know that, that, um, those trails better. There's one specifically that goes by the, um, radio tower that goes up and it goes kind of behind Harold's house. There's also a diversion that goes up where you don't have to go behind Harold's house. So that trail to me would be of most interest in attaining from the Walton side of the properties. Um, from Jenkins, uh, it would be kind of the Midland Trail area that I think would be of interest to acquire. So, um, I, and I know that there had been kind of talks last year about potentially putting in some kind of like fire hazard road on the Midland Trail, kind of through Jenkins area, but not having it open to other vehicles, just as fire access only kind of.
That's right.
Um, so that's kind of where we're at. And, um, yeah, my, my urgency is just that I think the Waltons are gonna start selling at some point pretty soon. I'm not sure. I, I don't have any clear, um, indication of that, but just the fact that Harold passed away in June, it's been almost six months. I'm sure things are starting to get put in motion. And so it'd be nice to have a seat at the table. So thank you.
Okay. I appreciate your suggestions and particularly to make sure a note of gratitude is passed on. Uh, that's helpful, I think, very helpful.
Thank you.
Turn to anyone else, um, would like to raise their hand, uh, the citizens who are in this public comment. I see Corey Satella is back. Uh, Corey? Can you unmute and? See if Jillian.
Hi there, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Thank you. Gotcha.
Yeah, Corey Satella, I reside at two sixteen Pilot Knob Avenue. Um, and I'm speaking, uh, on my own behalf. Although you're aware, I'm also, uh, involved with a, a trail, uh, organization that, uh, that likes to partner with Manitou. Um, I'm very familiar with the trails up in that area. I'm good friends with, um, uh, the Vedito family that lives up above the Waltons. Um, they introduced me to, to Harold Walton. And so I have had for the fifteen years I've lived here, I've had permission to, to travel across that property. And I'm, I'm quite familiar with it. We've, uh, we've done trail work off the Ute, uh, accessing through the uh, Water Tower, the, the, yeah, the Water Tower Road. And I'm, I'm very interested in seeing what trail connections are possible. I would really encourage us not to get too focused on which trails exist there today, but to look at what trail connections are possible. If there is a possibility to make an arrangement that, that works out for these private landowners, um, we needn't be constrained by what trails exist there now. And we could design the, you know, the right trail. We could design sustainable trails that go in the places that we want. And so there's, there isn't really a, a need to be limited to the, the, um, unofficial trails that have been in there so far. The other thing I would say is the TOPS program in Colorado Springs does have the ability and in fact has done in the past, has purchased property outside of the city of, of Colorado Springs. And in fact, uh, was part of the purchase of Iron Mountain. And so there is a, a substantial fund that is available. And if we could, we could collaborate with the city of Colorado Springs, seems likely we could have resources to make a good proposal. I'm a big proponent of private land ownership and people doing what they want on their own private property. And I really believe we shouldn't, we shouldn't expect, you know, some kind of a discounted deal or something. If, if we want an easement or want to purchase some land, we should be willing to pay the fair market value. And that's the way it should be. You know, these, these people don't owe us any part of their private property and we need to, to keep that in mind. Um, you know, the, it, the, the idea that somebody's private property is blocking me from a trail. You know, like this is America where you own your land. And if you don't want someone on your land, you don't have to let them. And, um, these, these people don't owe us anything. We need to be, uh, approach them with um, some humility and, and try to find a deal that makes sense for them. Cause they're, they're in the right spot there. The other thing I just want to say is, um, I'm, I'm not aware of a neighborhood group here on Pilot Knob that does speak for the whole neighborhood. So,
Right.
Um, I certainly wasn't consulted with some of the statements that I heard that were made earlier. I'm open to some ideas. I would like to learn more, but, um, I was not asked to, if, if I agreed with those, uh, with some of the statements that I heard earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Corey. See if anyone else, um, in this public comment period who'd like to give us a little bit of insight or, uh, some suggestions. This has been pretty helpful, I think. All right, gonna. Hearing, hearing none?
So.
Okay.
Was there one other person with their?
I'm looking.
Hand up or their?
The one who says their hands up.
Okay, Anthony, Anthony Lane?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony Lane, um, I live up on Fairview Avenue. And, um, yeah, just checking out your meeting today and following the discussion. Um, yeah, I, I hike up there regularly and so it is also of great interest to people on this side of things up Ruxton and on the Fairview side.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other comments or suggestions for us? Okay. All right. Any, anyone else before we close this portion of the meeting then? Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and close the.
I would have.
Yeah, Cheryl, not, yeah, but not, not you yet. Cheryl, hang on. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting. Go back to committee comments. And so any comments from committee members, uh, or alternates on, um, what they'd like to be the next step. So I want to turn it back to Cheryl. But so far what we have is my, uh, offer to, um, if, if someone else wants to propose it, that's fine too. But my offer to make sure we check in with Dave Walton quickly and, uh, wrap to Chris Jenkins. Cheryl, what do you have?
Well, when you said check in, um, I mean, I heard, uh, a lot of interest in a well, what we normally call a site visit, but it would be a request for such a visit. So I think that and, and the sooner the better with the sense of urgency that I feel like many of the neighbors are feeling.
Okay.
Before something, yeah, to have a seat at the table.
Yeah. Judy, how about you?
Well, I would propose that we either as a, as a group or we form a subcommittee to work on a, an approach. Not, not, I don't even think I want to call it a plan, but an approach. Because on both sides and all the neighbors and on the Walton and Jenkins issues, the traffic up Ruxton will be the kicker on all of it. And if we don't come up with something absolutely uh, innovative that we can say, that's not gonna happen. Um, I don't know that we have, because we've heard it from both sides. I don't know that we, we want to get too deep into this and end up with, oh my God, the, both the Jenkins and Waltons saying, these people in Manitou just don't listen. And I, I think that's a really, you know, no one's, I think there's a way now we have in existence that we could, we could at least approach that problem. But until now, that has been a real kicker in all these discussions. And I think we, I think we owe it to the Jenkins and the Waltons and we owe it to the people on the west side of Manitou to, if we're going to even talk about this, to also work on that, cause that's a bottleneck. That's a real problem.
Well, it's a real problem and some pretty bright, motivated people in this city have thrown their energy against it. Or you sure you want to suggest that OSAC try to chime in as well?
I, I, well, I think, I'm just saying, i- if we go up there, you know, and the neighbors don't think there's a plan for that. Or Jenkins and Waltons think they're gonna be run over by a parking lot and, and bicycles and whatever the trails may look like in the future. Nobody's gonna move. The, the neighbors won't want it either because that's gonna put more, you just heard Jeff Berry say that. So the pressure up there is impossible already. So we're gonna make it doubly impossible to say, well, we got the property. That's not gonna fly. It's gonna be a real problem. And I'm, I'm saying, maybe we could just I don't know, meet, meet somewhere and just kick it around. I'd be willing to do it because I think no matter what we do, our efforts are gonna go all the way into the toilet. If we don't come up with something that's a little bit shows an approach that might work. And I really am scared about that. I don't know how everybody else feels, but we don't want to put a lot of time and energy and you know, site visits, which I really want to do, no doubt. But not to, not to ignore this problem and pretend it's gonna go away. I guess is what I want to say. We can say, you know, we are, we formed a subcommittee or we as a group are working on this, even though it's not our bailiwick. We can always as a subcommittee go down to the transportation people and say, will this work? And they'll go, yeah. We're trying all kinds of things outside the box.
Okay. All right. Let's hear for some other, other members on, um, your suggestions on how we keep this moving ahead. Any other comments?
I, I mean, I sorry, I'm just trying to figure out. It's kind of a, a complicated issue to unravel. My understanding is that what the landowners have tried to do is they, they have had commercial interests that would have likely brought more traffic in, which was the, you know, the, the issue with the local residents. So that really to me is outside of OSAC, whether the, the city and, and the landowners, if they are trying to have commercial, you know, if, if there's someone else who wants to try to cut some deal where we, you know, get access for trails in exchange for their, their ability to do commercial activities. I mean, that to me is outside of OSAC. With respect to just the trails in that area. I mean, I think you can have trail access there. It's not gonna attract a lot of, you know, more people to that area that, that trails, you know, if you don't provide parking and you don't provide restrooms, uh, you, you, it, it's not, you're not really gonna attract hikers from the other hiking trails in this area. Uh, bicyclists, if they go in there, they can just ride through town to get there. So I mean, there's, there's, there is a way to develop trails in that area that don't increase car traffic. Um, and, and there also is land there that's public land owned by the city of Manitou and Colorado Springs Utilities. So we could look at those, the land that's publicly owned and see if there's the opportunity for some access that we could start working on. At the same time of approaching the landowners, the private landowners and seeing if there's a possibility for an easement.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else right now? I'm gonna. Judith, I always ask your opinion and your suggestions, so I'm gonna get, get to you here in a minute. Anybody else right now have some initial comments? I'll make a suggestion as well, but Judith, what are you thinking? What, um?
Well, uh, you know, this particular issue has a lot of moving parts, as we know, right? Lots of moving parts. You have private landowners, you have developers, you have, um, and, and we, we saw, um, this year, um, you know, a proposal come to council and the, and, and how that worked out. Um, and so I, 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 I'm, would be very reluctant at this point to comment on anything because as it was well put, um, you know, these private landowners, you know, can do what they want with their property. And, um, we, I, I think that if OSAC is going to want to reach out at all and, uh, have any discussions, that city staff should be involved in that, in those discussions. I, I think it's, you gotta be really careful not to go rogue and, and, and go out there as a, as a board and try to get access if as we all know, there might be several irons in the fire already, uh, of which I, I would not be privy to, um. The, the other issue with this and Jeff Berry was very, um, articulate in this is this is an incredibly emotional hotbed issue. Um, this, this particular area, um, um, the home, I get emails quite often from homeowners and texts homeowners. Um, just last week I got several, um, from a homeowner on Pilot Knob asking about the surveyors up there and they're, they're very worried and, uh, very worried about the, the i- i- increase in traffic. So, um, w- would I love to know what's, what, what's, you know, on Walton's mind and on Jenkins' mind, I would love to know that. Um, are we likely to know that? Um, I, I don't know. And I, I would just say that I think it would be important to have at least, um, a conversation with, um, the city administrator. Uh, if, if you, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. Um, I, I think it's great to thank them. And also just ask, I love Cheryl's, you know, uh, idea of just, hey, we just want to ask and just see if we can just see your property and um, try to open some conversations, but at least let the administration know that that's your intent and get their, their feedback. Um, because as I said, they're developers, um, you know, developers have an eye on, um, incoming new city council members, right? And if they have worked with a previous city council and things didn't quite go their way, they're not fools. They're not stupid. They're developers. They'll, they'll wait and come back when the timing is right. So have we seen the last of this? I don't think so. Um, that said, uh, there's a very little I can comment on as a counselor on anything that might come up. Um, so, so I guess that would be my, my only input on that. I'm, I realize I'm not really saying much, but I also have to really tread carefully on this issue.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the advice to check in with the city administrator, um, and can do that. Um, let's see, um, anybody else, uh, Marion, Cassandra, Andrea? Care to make any comments on this? Cause I can give a summary otherwise. Andrea, please, anything extra? Looks like someone's trying to grab you with those hands behind you. Be careful. Okay? Very realistic. Thank you. Um, Marion, how about you?
I mean, basically I, I think we have to be, um, careful the way we execute this. I, I kind of agree with Judy about maybe looking with the subcommittee and, uh, you know, making sure it's okay with the, uh, city council kind of thing. Cause you know, um, we already have this, um, not so good relationship and I think we have to tread very lightly. So I think it's important that, uh, you know, we get all the part.
So I think it's important that uh, you know, we get all the parties involved, maybe as part of that subcommittee, and try to answer the best way to proceed.
Okay. Got it? Any, anything else, Cassandra? Anything? I'm just going down the list here to make sure we try to air some ideas here.
I have, I have a question about what she just said.
Okay, Cheryl, please.
Um, and, and Judy, um, about a subcommittee, in terms of people on this committee who would be interested in being on the subcommittee, is it actually going to be a subcommittee, or is it going to be the whole committee? There's a lot of interest. Well, it seems to be a lot of interest.
Could be either.
Yeah, could be either.
So I guess it would just mean more meetings to discuss this talk.
That's, that's the trade-off. Uh, how nimble and quick do you want to be?
About that, I'm just saying, I, I, I would not want to wait if it's, you know, the whole committee till next month and the next month and the next month. I would even want to see more meetings in order to move forward with any, any potential plan or pursual of, to see what's, you know, to see what's possible.
Okay, I hear that. Loud and clear on time versus process. Cassandra, can I get back to you? And see if you had any comments?
Oh, no, no comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, what, what I'm hearing is that we would like to uh reach out to the Walton family uh at a minimum. Um, and again, it's, it's a, needs to be a thoughtful, consider conversation. Uh, I think we've got the predicate to do that, having met with Dave back in February. Uh, doesn't have to be me, but that's what I'm referring to. Uh, Tim Beeson has done that before twice, and I was a part one time. So there's certainly a, a predicate for us to do that and um take the suggestions um from Amy Karas and um Judy um Karnik and Cheryl Klein on how to do that. Um, I can check in with the city administrator before I do that. Um, but if there is interest in doing a um committee, um, right now, we don't have any active committees. Then y'all need to speak up and say so, because we can do that, and we can try to do it very quickly. Uh, I heard Judy's comment and Judy's suggestion uh that we do that. Um, but I need to hear from others if we're going to decide to do that or not. Okay, I'm not, not hearing any support for that right now. Um, unless someone objects, then I will check in with Denise Howes um this week, and I will um make plans to contact Dave Walton and have that conversation and uh, and report back to you um on how that goes. I can do the same thing with Chris Jenkins. And uh, again, check in with Denise first and um making sure that's coordinated. Okay, if no objection, then, then that's what we'll do, and we'll do it quickly. Judy, please.
Oh, I was just going to say, could somebody explain, I'm not, I think I've lost. How, how would that work if we said? I'm just hypothesizing, because I'm running ahead a little bit, but let's just say that one of the Jenkins or the Waltons said, oh yeah, come on up, we'll take a hike, so to speak. Um, but would we, so let's say all of us wanted to go. But that would be a violation of this, we'd have to publish it and let everybody, every citizen who shows up go on it. I don't think that's going to fly. So I think that's something we ought to think about as well.
Yeah.
How does that work?
So, um, I, I, I want to make a motion that we, that we form a subcommittee, so we can talk about this further. It seems like we kind of mushed right over that decision.
Well, that's what it takes. It takes a member like you.
Make a motion or move that we form a subcommittee to discuss how to approach, and then let's have some more discussion about whether we're going to do that, who wants to be on it if we choose to do it. Because it feels like that was a fairly interesting or idea, but then we went right past it.
No, well, that's, that's how, that's how this committee works, is that it takes someone like you to raise your hand and make a motion. Because all I can do is try to use my skills such as they are to read a consensus, and sometimes I don't get it right. So making a motion is entirely the proper way to do it. Right now, there's a motion, it would need a second for us to continue that discussion. Judy?
I'll second it.
Second the motion, okay. So the concept is just as Cheryl outlined it, um, is to form a committee to continue this discussion, um, a bit smaller forum um, on, I'm going to add whether, but whether and how to approach Jenkins and Walton, and um I think that's the proposal. Um, I think recognizing the sense of urgency that um the committee members and the citizens have spoken of, this needs to happen very quickly. So if you're interested in doing this, you need to be prepared to move and be nimble and make it happen. Uh, otherwise, as Cheryl says, it's going to happen in late December, January, and that just doesn't work. That's not going to be productive. Anyone else would like to serve on that? Andrea, what are your thoughts?
I do not want to serve on that, but um, but uh, I just want to point out that even a subcommittee, if you have more than two people meeting, um, you have to make it a formal meeting, but maybe talk with Denise about that. Um, I don't know, maybe if you're not voting on anything, I'm not really sure.
Okay, but we'll, we'll make sure we check that box. Yeah, thank you for the reminder.
What, do you want me to do that, Dave?
That'd be fine, Judy, thank you.
Cheryl, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay.
And then you'll get back.
Okay, I'd be happy to, to be a part of that too. So right now, it would be Judith Karnik, Cheryl Klein, and myself to continue this discussion and um include Denise Howell in that. I think uh, the other thing that's on the list, I, I don't want to confuse matters, but um I would like to drive the uh, the water department road with Judy. And um, if anybody else wants to join on that, we can do that. If we need to post it, we will, but um Judy and I can make arrangements to do that. I'm sorry?
Is that going to be like a clown car? Like if 20 citizens show up, we all pile in the same car, car?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't understand you. I apologize.
Cars when the, the 10
Ah, I clown. Well, I don't think there'll be that many. But uh, we'll at least do that. Judy and I will take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, that, we have a motion and a second to form the subcommittee, and we've had three volunteers to serve on it, Judy, myself, and Cheryl. Any more comments on discussion? Uh, I would like to take a vote on that. Uh, we don't have any other mechanism for approving it right now. Any more discussion? Not seeing any. Let's uh, let's vote on that. And so first, we'll ask, all those in favor of Cheryl Klein's motion for this subcommittee, raise your hand. We got three, four, five, and six. Okay, thank you. And so that's approved. There is no one else to vote, so there are no nays on that. So that's approved. All right, I'll take that. Judy, you're going to check um on the open meetings requirements on that. I think we know what they are. If there are three of us, that's uh, we do have to comply with that. Andrea um is correct and has reminded us about that, okay? Can we close out that agenda item or any other comments?
Dave, I just, I just want to comment, I, I believe that some of the trail that's in discussion is on the private land or goes, has access from private land. But also, some of that trail goes through Manatou Springs and I believe Colorado Springs Utilities land. And those are two completely different animals of talking to private landowners versus working with public entities. And I believe that they should be separated. And I'd be happy to work with Jillian to try to talk up to the land agencies that own the public land and see what we could do to get legitimate access through their property, through those parcels.
Well, is, is I, I'm not the one who came up with this, uh, but you know, the phrase is, it always starts with a conversation. Um, it's the only way to start something.
Yep, so, so certainly.
I think that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm appropriate to be on the subcommittee talking to the private landowners. If, at some point, you need trail design, trail consulting, I, I'm happy to step in and help you guys. Um, but I think, you know, I just would like, I mean, I'll, I'll get with Jillian and, and discuss um the public land that's involved and what steps would needed, be needed to try to get, because, I mean, if you get, even if you get approval of the private property, if you don't get approval of the public property that those trails go on, you still don't have a whole trail system.
Yeah. Well, it's what Judith Chandler was saying there, a lot of bells and, a lot of moving parts is the phrase she used, a lot of moving parts in this. And uh, there are multiple agencies here, um, so that matters as well. Any objection to Paul doing that, working with Jillian to make those contacts, just to start a conversation? Okay, hearing no objection. Thank you, Paul, for suggesting that. Well, let's close that out then. Uh, and to the citizens who joined us, thank you guys again um for your suggestions. And uh, as Cheryl says, keeping this conversation going and trying to make it productive. So thank you. We've got one more item, and that's um a governing document, um, a standard operating procedure. Um, this is kind of bubbled up uh, in part because we have two new alternates who both have asked uh, what are the governing documents that they need to be familiar with? And um, that raised the question of, do we have a standard operating procedure? And the reason for that phrasing is that the city council's enabling ordinance from 2006 that created OSAC requires OSAC and P A R B and M A P to have a formal standard operating procedure that is consistent with the ordinance and that addresses, um, it's about four, it's a list of like four or five things, uh, how to handle alternates, how to elevate them to uh full membership, um, subcommittees. Those are the ones that come to mind. So I asked around, and Tim Beeson responded that he had two drafts. He had one from Nancy Wilson in 2022, and then he had his own revisions to that. And so that's the document I've shared with you. Um, that's the provenance of that document. I've made some very minor uh word changes, but nothing of substance from what Tim Beeson had. I'm happy to give you Tim's original draft and Nancy's original draft. Um, I know Marion Carusi has, Sarusi has already looked at this and has some suggestions she'd like to make. Um, and she even offered to form um a committee um to get this into shape. As you see from the agenda, what I was proposing is because this is a bit complicated, well, that's not the right word. Um, it's four or five pages, it's not complicated. Is kind of like we, the way we did the budget, you know, put it on the agenda, get it out to the committee members, let you guys look at it, uh, think about it, make any revisions, and then um somehow get it back on the agenda and get it approved, because we really ought to have this in place. So those are my comments. Have, do any of you have any comments on it at this stage? Is it jumping out at you? Um, Marion, you've um, again, you've sent me some comments today, and thank you for taking the time to do that. She has about 12 comments or suggestions. Um, what are your thoughts on how to pursue um, keep this moving, Marion?
I think uh, if, if folks can, um, typically what I did with uh other such documents is everybody provides their comments, and then we kind of collate them. If there's similar comments, you know, you just collate into one. However, if somebody says, write red, and somebody else says, write green, there's a meeting to try to, you know, come up with an agreement. So I would say, you know, put a timeline for somebody, uh, for folks to comment, or that they have no comments. And uh, you know, if they want to get it back to me, I'll look it over, and then I could work with you to say, look, you're, you're going to have to have another meeting on this, or maybe, you know, uh, meet with those folks. Again, I don't know what the sunshine law says, but in, in case there's people that are in conflict. And then uh, once that's done, send out another version. I'd like to capture version number and date, so it's really a little bit more official about, and, and also an SOP and how to review an SOP.
Yeah, I saw that comment. Thank you. Um, let's see, anybody else right now? Um, oh, let me follow up on Marion's comment. What Marion had done, she had used um a product through uh Adobe platform for um editing and entering your comments. And um, Jillian, can we continue to utilize that? Since Marion's familiar with it, that'd be pretty efficient if we could do that.
We should be able to.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issues with that.
Okay. Um, any other comments uh before we take up Marion's suggestion of um circulating uh this Adobe um edit? I'm not sure how to, how to best circulate that, but um, again, the idea is that you take, you create a draft with your comments, and then Marion uh compiles it, but there's got to be an efficient way to do that. Surely some of you folks who do Google Groups or Microsoft Teams know how to do this efficiently. I don't, I'm a solo practitioner, so I don't.
So Dave, the only thing we might run into with that is I think to edit Adobe, you have to have the software on your own computer. So I don't know if Adobe's the right platform for this group to use. We might want to consider something else. We could try it. Uh, I'm just not sure if everyone's going to have access to edit tho- those Adobe documents.
Yeah, Ma- Marion, what, uh, do you know the answer to that? I don't, um, I didn't have any problem opening it and using it. I did not add any comments to it today, but I did open it and review it.
Yeah, typically that, you know, you could have that, you could have Foxit, you, there's a variety of other platforms. I don't know if people have ever used Adobe before, but it's commonly used. I would say that if people don't have it, since it is a short document, uh, they could just say, um, you know, paragraph three where it says, you know, whatever. Uh, I would like to see this changed as, as a last resort. Otherwise, we're going to have different kinds of software out there, and it's going to be a mess.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think the suggestion is if you can send your own comments, um, either using that platform or separately, as Marion just described. Uh, any objection to utilizing uh one of our alternates in this manner? I, I'm, I'm delighted to be able to, to uh have more committee members, more people doing stuff, so. Any objection to that? None? Very good, very good. Um, Marion asked for a deadline or suggested we do a deadline too. Um, could we do it by next Monday? Could people commit to look at this this week and um send comments? Even if you just send an email saying, looks good to you, you look forward to seeing the next version, that's good enough? Would that work by next Monday? Okay, so that's the 24th for individual comments on the standard operating procedure draft. That would be great. Yeah, Judy, please.
That brings up another question. I actually don't know if I have an actual current list of everybody's email addresses and cell phone numbers. And I, I think, I think
Well, I, I guard that very carefully. I have not, I'd be, that's one of the first things.
I can't email Marion.
That's one of the first things I prepared is how to get in touch with you guys. So I will be happy to uh ask um Ju- Jillian to circulate that. Is that the right way to do that, Jillian, or just send it directly to Judy? What do you think?
Uh, that's a great question. So we definitely can't have folks replying all, just, you know, going back to our sunshine laws. Um,
But if, but if you had, if you had a current email, and I don't know about cell phone, but email address and cell phone uh, uh, numbers, you could just have it. Like I have one for the women's club. You know, if I have to call a member, I don't have to call the president to ask her, is what I'm saying. It's really nice.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with sharing contact information as long as the members are okay with that.
Well, Dave, you sent one out, but that was before Marion or Cassandra joined us. Um,
I've updated it. I'll, I'll make sure it gets sent then. I'll work with Jillian, and I'd have that sent out by tomorrow, if her schedule permits that. I will get that done. It'll have emails and a phone number.
Thank you.
Is that okay? No objection? Okay. Then we'll do that. That's the last thing on that operating. No, Judy, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I, I have one, because while we were talking about an item on the front, it occurred to me, because this has already happened so many times. We don't have, when we go on site hikes that are open to
We don't have, when we go on site hikes that are open to the public, because we're meeting more than three, three of us and so on. We don't actually have anything, and I don't know if any other committee does either, but I think it would be nice to have something like a button, a button pin, you know, that you can put on your jacket. Identifying who we are, so that the people. You know, the citizens who come with us. Oh, you're on OSAC. I want to talk to you about this thing. But whatever, I, I just think it'd be really nice. For them not to have to say, well, who's, who's the OSAC people here? And I, I thought that would be a nice thing for all of us to have. We go on a site visit, we just wear our pins or whatever it is, or one of those, what do they call them, which you put over your head, so you don't have to put holes in your clothes.
Those lanyard things?
Yeah, whatever it is.
Or, or we could get a rather hideous colored vest to wear. Like a safety vest. Don't you think? Yeah, Cheryl's brightening up on that one.
As long as it's purple.
A very bad color, okay. I hear the suggestion. I, I might brainstorm with Jillian and see what's easily produced on that.
Pins or lanyards sound better than.
Okay, all right, I'll drop it. Anything, any, anything else on that process, on that standard operating procedure? We really do have to have it. I'm surprised we don't, but no one can find one, so let's, let's get it in place. So that'll be certainly on the December, we don't have a December meeting. Let's talk about December. If I can close that out and go to December. Okay. Last meeting, we had thought we would perhaps drop a December meeting, which the standard operating procedure says we are entitled to do. And that we would instead have a social at someone's house, a couple. Oh, my fire alarm is talking. I'll close my door. Yeah, we'll see what, what triggered that. Right now, what, we're not having a meeting, is that correct?
Right.
And who had volunteered to do a hostess again? Ms. Karnick had. I would like to do that. And did we pick a date? I apologize, guys. I'm gonna have to close my door, so I can hear, I think. Okay. It's telling me it's time to close this meeting, right?
Right.
Did we pick a date, guys?
You did that on.
I thought we did. Let me check my notes real quick.
I don't have one.
Anybody remembering that?
Nope.
Dave, we didn't pick a date. We didn't pick a date for that.
We did not.
Correct, we didn't.
Thank you, okay. Well, bring up your December calendars. And this is for whoever can make it. It was, I really enjoyed it last year. It was the first one I attended and it was a great way to, to meet all of you at a different level. So we're looking at the calendar of December. Ms. Karnick, what's your preference?
Well. It's, it's pretty open until, starting in the 20th for me, and I'm sure other people would say the same.
How about that week of the 15th?
How about, do you, does, do people want it on a weekend or a weekday?
I can do either.
Well, what does everybody else think?
Anybody want to throw out a date, suggest a date that works best for you? Anybody?
The 11th is good, 13th is good.
Okay. How about the 11th, Thursday, the 11th? That'd be okay, guys? A weekday? Robin thinks okay? Andrea?
I, I can't, I can't do the 11th. That, we have a special city council meeting for the second reading of the budget on the 11th.
That's rather important.
How about the weekend, that weekend? Because I also have a meeting that day from six to eight, so.
Well, the 14th is Hanukkah, so it would have to be the 13th.
Right.
13th is fine.
13th.
13th works.
No.
I'm sorry? What?
I may not.
On the 13th, that family.
Okay. Let's consider one other date, see if we can make it work. Otherwise, we may have to do.
Judy, do you have some more suggestions?
How about, well, I was gonna say, how about? How, I just looked at it. How about Tuesday, the 16th? Oh, that's city council? No, there's no.
I have council, but I'm not sure if we're meeting yet. Well, we may be meeting, yes. Yeah, because we're off the 23rd.
So we, so Judith, what, we can at least consider that right now and just not sure, or?
Yeah, I, we probably have a council meeting on the 16th.
Oh, and the 18th, okay.
No, the 11th.
11th, thank you.
The 11th is just a short special meeting to, for second reading and approval of the budget.
Okay.
So how about the 18th?
Yeah, 18th works for me, but Judy.
Robin?
I, 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 I can make that work.
Okay, Robin? Andrea, what are you thinking? Okay. Paul, you think you can join us on the 18th?
Yeah, I don't see issues.
Okay. Well, let's consider then a social that evening, Thursday, the 18th, at Judy's house. And we'll get some follow-up details when we get a little bit closer. We did a potluck before and that was part of the fun of it. See how badly someone.
Somebody, remember, did we, we didn't do, it was just us, right? No spouses?
Oh, it was. Oh, no, it was spouses.
Okay, so how many people is?
Those who were brave enough to come, like Jillian's husband, who else?
Well, Craig.
Okay, all right, 18th. And then otherwise, we'll be back on our regular schedule in January. So I think you should plan, there're gonna be some email communications through Jillian's office between now and January for sure. On a couple of, of matters.
And, and that brings up another question, calendar-wise. Do we want to go all the way through December and all the way to the end of January, or do we want to meet? I don't know if that's allowed, but would, does that a thought? That we shouldn't go two months with this thing with the Jenkins and all these other things hanging?
Well, that's what I'm saying. There'll certainly be emails. You know, if we need to do a special meeting, don't hesitate to suggest one. We can do that. Absolutely.
I'm just saying it's something to think about.
I think the year, year before last, we did do a December early meeting and then the party.
I think, I think.
Okay, well, right now it's already the 17th. We're talking the 18th for the social, Thursday, the 18th. I better write it down.
There's, there's the 8th. Monday, the 8th. Of December.
For a meeting? I'm sorry, let me get my calendar back, okay? You know, we could pencil that in and see if we, if we do have an update by then, because that's, you know, that's only.
Not very far, you're right.
Yeah, one, two, three weeks out.
And Thanksgiving week is already in there.
Yeah, that's just the way that, that's why things slow down, the holidays. But I, well, you want to do that? You want to pencil that in, guys? If we needed a special meeting, we'd schedule it and do it on the 8th. How about that? So you can hold it on your calendars. That might be a good plan. Okay. Can I hear on the 8th? Are we okay doing that? This would be to pencil in a potential meeting. Cheryl, go ahead.
I ju, I'm just agreeing, okay?
Oh, thank you, okay.
I was voting, if you were voting.
I'm, I'm sorry, was that January or December?
This is December 8th. To hold that as a potential meeting, it would be a short one, but it would, that way, we can keep things moving.
Okay.
Okay, then let's do that. December 8th for a potential special meeting. Okay. And I hope y'all appreciate I'm risking my life by staying here during this false alarm to serve you as your chair.
Gratitude.
I'm just losing my hearing by doing it, but that's, all right. Okay, the last thing was bisal parcel. I skipped over that. What we've, what we've done is, at the city administrator's suggestion, my suggestion, Steve Bysel's suggestion, is engage a experienced real estate person to give a value opinion. That person is Gary Pfeffer. Some of you may recognize the name. He's a very experienced commercial leasing agent in Colorado Springs. He's been around 40 years. The city has engaged him. He has toured the property with Jillian and me. He has spoken with Steve Bysel. He's about to meet with Steve. And he's also spoken to other landowners in order to get some comparable values. He expects to follow up with Jillian and me, perhaps next week with just an update. But he will do a written report and that will be shared with all of you in an executive session. As to a possible valuation of some or part of the bisal parcels. So right now, that's what we know.
We might even be able to do that on the 8th.
Well, that potentially, that, you're right.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that's where we are. So we're, we're waiting for, for Gary to, to give his, give us his analysis. Cheryl?
For the subcommittee meeting with Judy, you and myself. Can we stay on here? Is it legal to stay on here to talk about that date? Because I'm not back in town yet. I'd need to, if it's in the next two days, I need to attend by a virtual meeting. Is it okay to, for the three of us?
Yeah, we can, we can schedule. Yeah, we can schedule. And then Judy is gonna follow up with either Jillian or Kristen on the open meetings and how we need to post that.
Oh, are you saying we should meet right now, Cheryl, or just set a date?
Well, if we want to pick a date, or do we, are, are we not allowed to text or email to pick a date? So.
Yeah, let's pick a date.
Actually, I think you can just, if you're talking about just a date, is that right, Jillian?
You can, you can do that. You just can't discuss business.
Right.
And schedule meetings and, 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 and put issues out there. You just can't talk about them.
But we can text each other and pick the date. You're okay with that.
Right, you just can't specifically get into weeds on an issue, yeah.
You know what? We're here. We could do it in two minutes.
Yeah, Judith, can you suggest a date? Excuse me, Cheryl Klein? Your schedule seems a bit tighter right now because of some family obligations. What would, either by phone, could be virtual, doesn't have to be in person, better in person, but. Oh, my fire alarm just canceled.
The house already burned down. Oh dear.
Okay.
Well, it would work better for me if I. If we had it next Monday.
I'm in a trial all day that Monday. That's my only obligation that week other than Thanksgiving. You got anything, Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 25th.
I'm not here, I'm not here the whole rest of the week. That's Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay, well then.
Oh, that's true. That's Thanksgiving week. But Tuesday.
Ends up being.
What about the 2nd of December, Cheryl?
That's, that's good.
Are you saying, yes, we did it that fast?
That's right. What time?
What time do you want? I can be, I can be available at three on, on, on that Tuesday.
December 2nd, 3pm?
Three.
Okay.
Cheryl, yeah?
Yes, that works.
Okay. And I'll work with Jillian on how to post that. We'll figure that out with Judy's gonna inquire too, to make sure we do all that correctly.
Yeah.
Well, good.
Are we talking about a place or in person?
Yes, probably. I, I should be there by then.
You want to meet at my house, it's fine. Or do you want to meet downtown in Manitou?
I'd just assume you meet at your house, Judy.
Yeah, okay. You're okay with that? Okay, Judy's.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
All right. Anything else that I missed on the agenda? Sometimes I do that. No? Okay. Thank you, guys. I thought the public comment session went really well. And Cheryl, thank you for prompting all that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
We need a motion to adjourn.
Sure, go ahead. Motion by Judy Karnick to adjourn and a second by, by Robin. And any discussion done, all in favor of adjourning? Raise your hand. Looks good. There's Ms. Satella. Okay, passed. Ms. Chandler, thank you as always for joining us.
Oh, thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Did you cut your hair? I just have to ask.
Did I cut my hair? No, I just in a ponytail.
I couldn't figure it out.
All right, thanks, everybody.